Welcome to the City Council meeting for Monday, May 16th, 2011. I'd ask everyone in attendance to join council in singing "Oh, Canada." Please rise.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all thy sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Well, thank you to the National Film Board of Canada for those images of our country and to Mr. David Bray for the audio rendition of our anthem. We'll start the meeting with the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. I see Counselor Crokin.
I'd move the adoption of the previous council minutes.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. Motion for adoption of the minutes of May 2nd. Any discussion or debate? Did anyone notice any errors or omissions in those set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. I'm just going to look to administration. I'm not seeing that vote result come up. Okay, we're going to re-vote, so we have a motion for the minutes of May 2nd. I'm going to call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Thanks very much. Next, we have the adoption of the agenda. We did have a number of items that came from our council committee of the whole meeting. Could I have Counselor O'Toole please move the adoption of the agenda with some additional items? Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, I'd like to include...
Sorry, Counselor O'Toole, you've just got to make sure that your microphone's on there.
There we go. I'd like to adopt the agenda with the additions of item 9.7.1, piece library system per capita increase, and items 9.8, sponsorship applications over $2,000. I also have some more, 9.9.1, tender T-16-552-11, 2011 sidewalk replacement program. I have item 9.9.2, tender T-20.552-11, 2011 road rehabilitation program. One more, item 9.9.3, tender T-19552-11, the 2011 overlay program.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. And just to speak to these, we have a number of motions that are coming forward tonight because council will be having one council meeting where a number of council members are out of town, and so otherwise it would be a four-week wait until the next council meeting. So to ensure that we meet some deadlines, these are being added to tonight's agenda. So any further discussion or debate on the agenda as amended? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. So now we come to the delegation portion of the agenda, and this is an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward to address council on any community issues. We did have one delegation that notified us ahead of time, and Mr. Severson wanted to come forward and address council. Mr. Severson, if you'd like to come forward to the seat here? Yes, of course, of course. Come on up and introduce yourself for the city clerk's record, and we give you approximately five minutes, and then there'll be time for council members to ask any questions.
Arnie Severson and Mrs. Jean Severson.
Welcome.
Thanks. We've been having a real deer problem in Swan Haven there. It's our place. It's a deer problem in Grand Prairie is out of hand. Last summer, they ate our lettuce, broccoli, turnip tops, carrot tops, beet tops, petunias, garlic chives, and onion chives, and they even ate some of our mountain ash trees. And the only reason I saved the carrots and stuff like that, I covered them with gunny sacks in the fall there so they wouldn't start pulling them out of the ground, too. We have a small cedar that's covered with a big tomato cage and chicken wire, so they would've ate that also. And John Crokin, he took pictures of some of the damage there last fall there. Byron Johnson across the street has two cedars that are stripped as far as a deer can reach. Also, they dirty all over the yard. I picked up 11 places one time last summer. The place isn't in the city, it's in the wild. There's more all the time. Was 11 counted and heard two blocks south, and seven or eight heard just east of the hospital, and I understand they're feeding them there. Somebody told me that. He's seen it. And last summer, the wildlife people told us that they counted 30 of them down in the valley there in the winter of 2009, 2010. And I said, "Yeah, you probably missed 15 of them." Yeah, he said, "I probably did." He said, "They're probably someplace else." And then they had young ones last spring and young ones this spring, so there's probably 80, 90 of them down there by now. And it's not just eating the vegetables, it's urinating on the garden as well. What about the brain-wasting disease in deer? Last summer, on May the 9th, 2011, we phoned the Environmental Health Services and spoke to Elmer Spilchner, Spilchen, who said he couldn't do anything. He said it wasn't a health issue. I asked him what it was if it wasn't a health issue, and he wouldn't answer me. I asked him a number of times, and he hung up both times. Some yards in the area, like barnyard, you walk around them, you step in crap, and you bring it into the house. What about little kids? They probably think it's candy, and they'll probably eat it. That's real healthy. We spoke into John Crokin, Helen Rice, Kevin McLean, and Phil Given about the deer problem. We talked many times with Fish and Wildlife, with Wayne Matier, Kelly Moran, Eldon Pulshi, Sandra and Janice in the office. We also talked to Wayne Drysdale, who spoke with Mel Knight, the head of Sustainable Resources. And they got us... And then we had two phone conversations with that Kim McCadham, the head of Fish and Wildlife in the Department of Alberta. There was no satisfaction from him at all. But Wayne Drysdale, he tried to get something going, but didn't get anywhere. We spoke with Gary Roth, the safety issue. The number of deer have been hit in the city on 84th Avenue Bridge, also by the bypass, un-bypass, by wallies in one block west of our place. That's hard on vehicles as well as insurance premiums. We told Fish and Wildlife, as well as Gary Roth, someone's going to get killed yet, and it'll be on their heads. If that unfortunate incident happened, I'll sure let them know. We're on a corner lot, and we were told by a fence builder, Patrick from liquidity, chain link fence, that a six-foot fence wouldn't do any good when the deer knows there's good food in the location and they have a run at it off 101st Street. He said, "Save your money. We can't have a fence over three feet in front. They can still get at the mountain ash, the ornamental apple trees and flowers. Fence is not an option." Fish and Wildlife gave us a couple of deer sirens and some spice mix last year, and it didn't do any good. It should be against the law for people to feed the deer in the city. People are doing it. I told Fish and Wildlife about it, about people feeding the deer, but nothing happens. The first I was told, Fish and Wildlife said that it was against the law for people to feed the deer in the city, and then when I find out people are feeding the deer and tell them about it, they say it's not against the law, so I don't know who the heck is lying. We want a garden with organic food. People are being told they should grow gardens. What's the use of their wrecked by wildlife? We pay high taxes in our area. We've got the tax notice today, it went up $176 on our property, and we have to fight the lousy deer. Either use a taser or a tranquilizer and haul them out of the city. Better yet, cull them out, get the food inspected, and give it to various institutions in the area. People that say they like the deer are the ones that haven't anything to be damaged or live in an apartment and try and tell homeowners affected how things should be. What are you, a city council, prepared to do to assist residents of Grand Prairie with the problem? There are many, many people with the problem. I've talked to a lot of people, and they don't know what the heck to do, so... There it is.
Mr. Severson, thanks very much for your presentation. We'll open it up for opportunity for questions from council, if any council members had questions. Seeing Counselor Crokin.
Thanks, Mayor Bill. Yeah, Arnie, we have talked at length, and I must say, I feel for you. I've seen the damage they've done to your hard work, and it's not right. Mind you, the deer were kind of here before we were, but that's...
No, they weren't, because we've been in that area for...
Oh, I was kind of thinking Alberta.
Yeah, but we've been in that area since '74, and they weren't bothering us until the last two years.
Yeah, and then... When there's no natural predator.
Counselor Crokin, do you have a question?
Yeah. Is there any particular time of the year that they're greater than...
Well, they're in the summertime, and they're in there in the winter. They strip the stuff off the ash in the winter even.
The berries?
Well, yeah, they eat the berries off the ornamental apple.
I was just thinking that we could get it to a season or something.
Well, they're there all the time. They're crap when they're all the time. Eating the... They strip the mountain ash there. I didn't know if it was going to come back. It looks like it's coming back anyway, but across the street, Byron's there. You know yourself how they're stripped right up to as far as they can reach, and there's other ones in the neighborhood that are like that, too, so it's not right.
Thank you.
It's got to be done.
Okay, thanks very much. I see Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Arnie, we did talk on the phone, and there's no fence in your backyard. I noticed that it wouldn't work, but I approach an area where it's lots of deer and bears, and loaves I seen the other day. I haven't had one deer in my yard on my five-foot, six-foot fence, so I don't know about the front yard, but the backyard, I think a fence would really help your situation.
Counselor McLean, do you have a question? For the delegation?
That was my question about possibly building a backyard fence. Would really help.
There's a fence in the back part, but not on the side, and I'm on a corner lot, and the fence ain't going to work there.
We've got a garden on the west side.
We've got a garden on the west side there, too, and it's not going to work like that. I believe this guy that... And I've talked to other people that said the six-foot fence isn't going to do anything. They'll just go over it. They said, "You've got to have an eight-foot fence or maybe a little higher even. They'll go, they'll try it." Six-foot fence, they just go over that.
Thanks very much. I see Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mr. Given. Arnie, thank you very much for coming in today. I was just wondering if you had talked to somebody like Dunvegan Gardens where they had plants that give off an odor of some type? I know they use them down in the United States along some of the highways and subdivisions where the deer are. I was just wondering if you would require or talk to them regarding that.
Well, Helen talked to... Told us about marigolds last year. We had marigolds along the driveway. They went right along that. That didn't bother them at all.
Because they ate the petunias?
Then they ate the petunias, so it didn't do any good.
Okay, thank you.
And it had spice on there on perimeter in the front there, and they just walked over it. They didn't bother them at all. And the sirens, they... Once last year, last probably August sometime, a siren went off, and I looked out the window, and there's a deer standing there, but he stood just so he wouldn't get that sensor to off. And he was standing there, buck, the only buck I seen. And I went out the door and I hollered at him. He didn't care. He just sauntered off.
Can I see more questions? Counselor Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Mr. Severson, from all the people that you spoke to, did anyone give you any suggestions in terms of what works for other municipalities, other towns or cities?
I got that deer sirens and that spice, and then there was somebody... Not these people said, but somebody said hair, but gee, hair, how are you going to mow around the thing? You're going to have a mess of hair all over the place. What are you going to do with that? And another one had a suggestion... What else? No, I guess that was about it. It was hair and stuff, but... And they said urine. Well, urine, that's nice.
Okay, well, thanks very much. I see one more. Counselor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Bill. Arnie, I had also talked to you about eggshell.
Yeah.
High River, apparently, was a solution. Eggshells are on your perimeter?
No, I don't know. I tried that. They said that Irish Spring soap was supposed to work, and that didn't do anything.
Okay, I don't see anybody else further in the queue looking for questions. Mr. Severson, we deal with public delegation business towards the end of our agenda, and so council will discuss this then. But thank you very much for taking your time today and coming and presenting concern. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, guys, and ladies.
So still an opportunity for anybody in the community that would like to come forward and address council on any community issue. We'll call another time to see if there's anybody that wants to come forward, and it doesn't look like there is, and so we'll move on from the delegation portion of our agenda onto public hearings, of which we have none, unfinished business, which we have none, reports, we have none, and then we're on to council committee of the whole for May 2nd and May 5th. Would somebody care to move those sets of minutes? See Counselor Wong?
Yes, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the council committee of the whole meetings held May 2nd and May 5th of 2011.
Okay, thanks very much. Any discussion on those minutes? Did anybody notice any errors or omissions? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. So we have some recommendations coming forward from those meetings. Can I have somebody willing to move those? Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Given. I'd like to make a recommendation that council allocate affordable housing conditional grant funding in the amount of $1 million to the Karen on the Boulevard Affordable Housing Project.
Okay, thanks very much. Counselor O'Toole, open it for discussion or debate on the motion. See Counselor Wong?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I am going to support this motion and definitely ask that other council members support it as well. This is $1 million of provincial money that needs to be allocated towards some kind of affordable housing project, and Mr. Cameron's project is definitely ambitious, but it's definitely also needed in the city. It's a very comprehensive housing unit, and I believe that it's a good use of the provincial dollars that have been entrusted to the city.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. We'll move on to item 9.1.1.1. Anybody care to move that one? Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, I'd like to recommend council allocate affordable housing conditional grant funding in the amount of $177,411 for rent supplements for the 40 units in Hearthstone Manor over a four-year period administered through the Grand Spirit Foundation.
Okay, thanks very much. Open for discussion or debate. I see Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will be supporting this motion and encourage my colleagues to do likewise. We have had rent supplements for Hearthstone since it opened, basically. We are finally fully occupied in that facility. These monies will enable us to continue those supplements so that we can look at full occupancy on an ongoing basis. The idea would be this would be a transition, and hopefully the market will change in four years, and we'll be able to maybe not need those rent supplements, but they're definitely needed now. And I guess it is a city-owned building, facility, and so this just helps us fill it so that we can cover our dementia costs. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any further discussion or debate? I see Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I just wondered if Counselor Radburn, Kansas, or somebody, director, how much would it be a saving per unit per month? Like, how much is this going to help? 50 bucks, 100 bucks? How much?
Okay, thanks very much. I wonder, Counselor Radburn, do you have an answer for that?
I don't.
Or is there somebody else?
I did know, but one time.
Okay. If there's nobody that's prepared to answer that... Sorry?
$100 a month per unit.
Okay, okay. So the acting city manager said approximately $100 per month per unit, but we can certainly request that additional information while circulating it to council by email. Okay. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you, and that motion carries. And we had one further coming from that set of agendas. Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I'd like to recommend that council approve funding in the amount of $150,000 be reallocated for the purchase of lands for affordable housing projects.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate? I see Counselor Rice in the queue.
When you say purchase of lands, is it lands with property on them, or is it lands to be built on? Or could it be either?
If I can speak to that from the meeting, the intent was to have it for either.
That's all.
Recognizing that the city doesn't have a lot of land to build any buildings on.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Rice. I see Counselor McLean in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I think this is a good initiative going forward, but I'd be voting against it because I believe the money could have went directly for young families to move into homes within residence, like eight young families, so I would have loved to see it done differently, so I'm hoping other council members might think the same. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Counselor Radburn?
I'll be... Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll be supporting this motion. As Mayor Given has said, we will have additional affordable housing needs, seniors lodge needs, and we have a dearth of available land for the city to support these type of projects, so this gets us started. Thank you.
Thanks very much. I see Counselor Wong?
I will also be supporting this motion, and my feeling is that we did get several million dollars, and we put a little bit towards the down payment money for people who are needing assistance in getting into their first starter home. We put some in rent supplements, we put some into buildings like the Karen Project and other affordable units. This just gives us... Or this allows us to acquire land so that we can continue to do more development in the future. I think it's a good way to kind of spread out the money that we were given into all the different areas that are in need.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. One more opportunity for any further discussion or debate. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. So moving on from... And I believe that was all the items from those set of minutes. We'll move on to the Public Works Committee from May 3rd, and Counselor Wong, I believe that was you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting held May 3rd, 2011.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Wong?
I also move that council award the Engineering Services Contract for the Storm Drainage Master Plan in the amount of $232,097 excluding GST to focus corporation as the highest qualified company to perform the work. And just a short lead into that, this will update a master plan that's going to be a little bit older, but more importantly, the Storm Drainage Master Plan will cover the new annexation areas, and that's something that city council needs to look at as we go through that process of gaining quite a bit more land from the county and how the storm water is going to be managed in those areas.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Wong, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
No, thank you, but I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Any questions for Counselor Wong? I see none, but I think the next set of minutes was yours as well.
Yes, I will move that council receive the minutes of the Combat sports Commission meeting held May 5th, 2011.
Thank you very much. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Wong, anything else that you wanted to cover from that Combat sports commission?
Sure, I'd just like to give council an update in terms of what's been happening the last few weeks. The committee has been working hard on assigning commission duties for the mixed martial arts event at the Crystal Center that occurred on May 14th. The commission's job, first of all, is to ensure the safety and the fairness of all those who are involved in the sport. So we had seven commission members and 11 volunteers that were utilized, along with three judges and two referees and two doctors that were hired. RCMP and EMT services were also utilized for this event. The event was very well coordinated with the promoters and the Crystal Center staff. Everyone was extremely great to deal with, and I don't have final attendance numbers, but I know that the event was considered extremely successful as well and went off without any major concerns. Our committee is now spending some time debriefing and finding ways that we can improve the experience, and we're going to discuss on how we can become more efficient for future events. But I do want to give just a public thank you to all those people who volunteered, everyone that was involved, staff at the Crystal Center. They represented the city of Grand Prairie extremely well and extremely professionally.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. I see Counselor Crokin in the queue. Question, comments?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Counselor Wong, I just wanted to know, you had said the EMS, RCMP, were these people all compensated by the competitive arts, their program? It wasn't the city they're protecting.
Counselor Wong, your microphone?
Yes, all these...
Counselor, yeah.
The services provided by all these agencies and organizations were paid for by the promoter.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Wong. And Counselor Wong, if I can add my congratulations, fantastic job to you and the committee. It's been just about four years of work to be able to get to the point of holding an event, and I know that you personally put in a lot of time and a lot of hours, so congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, from there, I believe we have the Environment Committee meeting, and I think Counselor Monroe, you were chairing that one?
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'd move that council receive the minutes of the Environment Committee meeting held May 9th, 2011.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in those minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Monroe?
Thanks once again, Mayor Given. I also move that council approve Friday, September 9th, 2011, as the date for the Take Part, Take Pride Committee Community Tour. And just to briefly speak to this, this is the tour that replaces the Community and Bloom participation that we used to be involved in. This committee is... It's, once again, a self-evaluation process, I guess, to replace the Communities and Bloom program, and the committee itself would consist of members from the Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Association, and if need be, some of the members of the council. Anyways, this is a great opportunity for us to showcase the city and see how well we're doing.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Any further discussion or debate from council members on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Monroe?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll also move that council proclaim Sunday, May 29th, 2011, as Day of the Honeybee. And just once again, to speak briefly on that, the day is simply to be created to increase the awareness of honeybee losses across the globe. According to the Canadian Hunting Council of Canada, there are 7,000 beekeepers raising over 600,000 bees in Canada, Alberta, Saskatchewan, and Manitoba... Pardon me. Bees in Canada. Alberta, Saskatchewan, Manitoba bees produce 80% of the nation's crop. The Peace region has just over 90 farms with colonies representing just over 30% of Alberta's bee population, so it is significant business here in the area, and I think it's important that we do make this proclamation. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Was there anything else that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes, Counselor Monroe?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. Just one highlight, there was some discussion several council meetings ago about confirmation of what the garbage container replacement cost is through Aqua Terra. It was brought back to us from Mr. Jeff Johnson from Aqua Terra that the garbage containers are $80 per if they are needed to be replaced at the residence, and Aqua Terra provided us with some sample brochures, et cetera, on their ongoing education process as it pertains to recycling and to the bins themselves.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Monroe. We'll move on to the Protective Services Committee meeting. And Councilor Radver, I believe that was you?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council receive the minutes of the Protective Services Committee meeting held May 10th, 2011.
Thanks very much. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Radver?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council appoint Ms. P. Gould and Ms. M. Weevil as weed inspectors for the year 2011, and Ms. B. Wellander as weed inspector for the duration of employment as full-time weed inspector with the city of Grand Prairie. And further, the Protective Services Committee act as an independent appeals board.
Thanks very much.
So, if I can speak to the motion, this is a Weed Control Act of Alberta requirement. So, each year we have to appoint the weed inspectors. So, that's the, the first two are kind of seasonal staff. The second one, I think she's, we won't have to keep making this appointment in future if we do this the way the second one is worked. She's a full-time staff member, and so she will serve in that role through all seasons and do other things. And finally, we need an appeals board if there are appeals or notices or the work of those inspectors. And typically, that has been the Protective Services Committee. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Councilor Radver. Discussion or debate? I see Councilor Rice.
Is it Ms. or Mr. Weevil?
Mister.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Councilor Radver, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. A couple of things. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the Canadian Paraplegic Association for their Chairs Leaders Event. I know Mayor Given participated very actively. And others on the committee kind of shared t-shirts and tried to raise the profile of that event. Very worthwhile and good on the group for, for undertaking it. Plus, most, most of the meeting was spent kind of looking at the taxi industry and looking at some administration, administrative report. But, we've asked, we provided some direction in a number of areas to administration. They are going to do a report, take it to the industry, and then bring back a report to the Protective Services Committee with their initial report and feedback from the industry for committee to look at things again before it comes to council. Some of the areas that we looked at, we're limiting the number of taxis, looking at submitting fee, taxi brokers submitting their fee structure and rates monthly, fee increases, and for a number of the license, license fees, having a minimum number of taxis for a broker, broker license, and looking at mid-year mechanical inspections required for taxis five-year-old, as, five-years-old at least, as opposed to the previous 10. So, those are some of the directions we're given. And so, the process now, as I've stated, is a report and further consultation, and then back to committee.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Radver. Any other notes from that committee meeting? Seeing nothing else for Councilor Radver, then we move on to the Municipal Government Day Team Meeting. And I believe Councilor McLean, that was your committee?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, I'd like to make a recommendation that council receive the minutes of the Municipal Government Day Team Meeting held May 10th, 2011.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor McLean, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight from that set of minutes?
Sure, Mayor Given. It went really well, the meeting. And there's weather permitting, it's going to be no wind that day and lots of sunshine. And it's looking like possibly a petting zoo is going to be there, and lots of things for the children. So, we're really looking forward to it. And we do have, I do believe, a meeting just before on June 8th, the Wednesday before June 15th. So, we're really looking forward to some events coming. And maybe some stuff on the theater being shown for the public to see what might be going into the new Aquatic Center. So...
Okay. I also see Councilor Rice.
Yeah, if I, if I may, Chairman McLean, does it mind, kind of a little different slant this year, the Grand Prairie Get Active Network is doing the game. And this year, it will actually, we've always called it our municipal Olympics, the Munios, which council has done in competition with other regional municipal councils and the county staff. But, they're, this year it will be open to the public, and it will be a takeoff on the amazing race, the Get Fit Amazing Race. So, watch for more details on that, start putting your team together. I think they're just doing a fabulous job, so.
Cool. Thanks very much, Councilor Rice, Councilor McLean. So, we'll move on from there to the Community Development Committee of May 10th, 2011. Councilor Monroe, I believe that you were stepping in on that one?
Yes, thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Community Development Committee meeting held May 10th, 2011.
Thanks very much. Now, this is a point where I call for errors or omissions, and there's a reason why I do that. Out of that set of minutes, if I can, Councilor Monroe, the motion on item 1, Peace Library System, per capita, sorry, excuse me, under correspondence, Peace Library System, I made a motion there, and I believe that it would be more accurate if it read, "Move by Mayor Given, the committee recommend council approve the Peace Library System 2012-2014 per capita fee increase," period. The intent of the motion was that we'd be giving administration direction that that would be included in the next budget cycle. The correspondence from the Peace Libraries, sorry, that I believe is the amendment. We can talk about the motion when it comes up, just following the vote on the minutes. Councilor Monroe?
Just to add to that, Mayor Given, that's, that fee schedule is attached, Schedule B in the original minutes.
Okay, thanks very much. Okay, so, any discussion or debate on the minutes as amended with that note on that item? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. This is me. Thank you. And that motion carries. And so, that brings us to item 9.7.1. Councilor Monroe?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council approve the Peace Library, Peace Library System 2012-2014 per capita in, per capita fee increase to the city of Grand Prairie as described in Schedule B. And just to speak to that for a moment, rates across the province range anywhere from $4.30 per capita to $6.97, with an average being of about $5.09. This puts us, it's a, it's a dollar increase over the course of the 2000, over the course of the three years, 50 cents the first year, 32nd, second, 30 cents the second year, and 20 cents the third year. And puts us right around the average range for that.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Monroe. I see a couple folks in the queue. Councilor Radver?
Thank you, Mayor Given. If I could provide some context for this, as I am the council rep on the Peace Library System. The letter that I'm, I'm sure most of you took a look at, that was in the package for the Community Development Meeting, really did a good job of outlining kind of the background, the rationale for the increase, the steps taken to reduce expenditures, and the comparison, as Justin has just explained, in terms of comparison of library system fees across the province. And it does also explain how the master agreement is, is changed. And basically, that is a two-thirds majority of municipalities have to, have to give the okay. I just think that this, this regional partnership is a really successful one. There are now 38 municipal partners and 42 libraries as a part of the Peace Library System. Governance is very functional. We have, by we, the Grand Prairie, city of Grand Prairie and the Grand Prairie Public Library have automatic membership on the executive committee. And I do believe we get good value. This is, this is kind of a $25,000 touch first year, and then 15, and then 10. So, it's $50,000 over a three year. And I think we're getting good value. Lori Harrison from the library board was actually at the committee meeting and spoke to how, how valuable the services of the Peace Library System are, particularly now as we've changed location and we have, are expanded our, our collections considerably. Much of those monies are, go to catalog, ordering and cataloging. So, we can, Peace Library does ordering en masse to get better, better rates, and plus, they do the cataloging. And I know the library does some of their own ordering, because they've had a lot of ordering in the last couple of years as we enter into the new facility. But, the Peace Library System provides cataloging for those as well. So, I do think we're getting good value for our, our membership in the Peace Library System. And I would encourage, oh, I also wanted to say, items catalog, for example, 26,866 in 2009, 53,689 in 2010. And not all of it, because we're expanding membership, members, but a lot of that is our library. And items, land and items borrowed are significant increases over last year as well. So, I think that it's doing good work, and so I would urge council to support the motion.
Thank you. Thanks very much. I see Councilor Rice.
Okay, I certainly will be supporting this motion. I'm a huge fan of the Peace Library System. As most of you are aware, I travel quite a bit. What an incredible asset it is, whether, well, I guess not anymore, but it used to be Slave Lake, High Prairie, Valley View, stop in at whatever library. As, you know, it's very simple math with 38 partners and 42 libraries. That, just the, the increase in the options available to the city of Grand Prairie Library patrons is absolutely incredible. And I would encourage everyone to support this motion to ensure we keep this, this option, this service available and cutting edge for, for the citizens of our community.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Councilor Monroe, was there anything else from that set of minutes?
Just a couple, thanks, Mayor Given. A couple of quick notes. We did have a number of delegations, three of them at this meeting. One was the John Howard Society who did a presentation on their Tabano Center, which works exclusively on referrals from different agencies to help youth that are having difficulties, in particular with, I guess, basic life skills. It looked like a fantastic program that they've got going. And we do have copies of the program brochure, if anyone is interested in having a, a look at it later.
Thanks very much, Councilor Monroe. So, we'll move on from there to our added items from our council committee, the whole earlier tonight. We had item 9.8 and sponsorship. Is there somebody that would care to make a motion? Oh, sorry, thank you very much, Councilor Rice. If you don't ring in, I can't turn on your microphone.
Okay, sorry. Okay, under policy, as per policy 112, I would move that the city sponsor the Royal Canadian Legion for Remembrance Day services in the amount of $6,100. This is rent that will go towards the Canada Games Arena under our, our policies. We, we cannot give away rent in the Canada Games Arena, so we have to charge them rent in this way. This is subsidizes their rent. And I would move that we sponsor the Sunrise House, Odyssey House Golf Tournament, $2,500.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Any discussion or debate on the two motions? Councilor McLean?
Are these being brought forward as two separate agendas, or all as one?
We can, we can split them if we wish.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll split them as two separate items. Okay, so, we'll deal with the first then, the Remembrance Day, $6,100. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And so, we'll move on to the second portion, the Sunrise House, Odyssey House, and $2,500. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Councilor McLean?
Is this for a golf tournament?
I believe that's what.
To raise money?
Yes, I believe that's what Councilor Rice had.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any further discussion or debate? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. And then we had items 9.9.1, 2, and 3. Would somebody care to move those? These were just from our agenda earlier, prior to tonight's council meeting. And I would look for a council member that was able to dig those out. I see Councilor McLean.
Does it, does it matter, Mayor Given, which one I start with?
Start with whichever one you want to start with.
Okay. Let's go with this. Okay, I'm a recommendation to award tender T-2055211 to Nelson Rock Products Limited in the amount of $3,846,245.40 as a tender meeting the city specifications. This amount includes construction contingency of $100,000 but does not include GST. And it's for a road rehabilitation program.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. And so, that was for the 2011 Road Rehabilitation Program. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks very much. Any discussion or debate? I see Councilor Rice.
Just to confirm perhaps with Mr. Anderson, the reason these tender amounts do not contain GST is, well, we will pay it, we will also get it back. So, GST will not affect the bottom line that we're voting on. Is that correct?
Mr. Anderson?
Mayor Given, that is correct. We do pay it. We get a fully back, so there is no net cost to us.
Okay, thank you very much. I see Councilor Crokin in the queue.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just for the public that would be wondering where this road rehab program is. I know I got a little thing from Public Works showing the roads in red, 102nd Street. And is that going to be available either on our website, or in the paper, or somewhere for the public to know where we're going?
I believe it's on our website now, Councilor Crokin, actually. And I'm hearing from the Director of Public Works that it will also be in the paper.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Now, if I could get an, a motion for either the road overlay program or the road rehab, or sorry, excuse me, sidewalk program? Okay, Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. It's recommended that we award tender T-1955211 to Rico Construction Limited in the amount of $872,981.42 as a tender meeting the city specification. This amount includes construction contingency of $100,000 but does not include GST. And it's for the 2011 Road Overlay Program.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And so, our final one was the 2011 Sidewalk Replacement Program. Councilor, I see Councilor Wong in the queue. Do you have that? Okay, Councilor Wong?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I move that council award tender T-16-552-11 for the 2011 Sidewalk Replacement Program to Wappity Gravel Suppliers, Division of NPA Limited, in the amount of $1,202,769.3 excluding GST as the tender meeting the city's specifications.
Okay, thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries as well. So, I believe that handled all the committee business. I see Councilor Rice in the queue.
I wonder if it would be appropriate now to announce that today is a kickoff for Public Works Week. And there's a whole series of events that's taking place. And Alderman Wong may have a more detailed.
Sure, we can certainly talk about that in roundtable.
Roundtable, you want to, under roundtable, okay.
There was a kickoff today that a number of council members attended, so we'll mention it there, I think.
Okay.
So, we'll move on to correspondence, of which we had none. Delegation business, we did have one delegation that attended, and I don't know if council has any direction to follow up on that. One thing that I did hear in the delegation's presentation and heard from the resident before was the concern about feeding large game in the city of Grand Prairie. And it's my understanding that there's nothing that actually prohibits residents from doing this, but the city may have the power to enact a bylaw which would prohibit that. So, that may be one way that we could address that, encouraging these types of animals to be further and further in the city. But, Councilor Crokin?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Is this appropriate time to, to maybe have this passed off to either Protective Services, I think would be the, would be the appropriate committee? I think would be the, would be the appropriate committee?
Yeah.
I know it's reoccurring, but if we could get it to that committee, and then they could flush it out and be really dear with the program.
Okay, okay, so we have a motion to refer the issue, and councillor Crokin, would you like to specify that a little bit more about exactly what is we're referring at? I'm not certain that, yeah, about which portion, because, so we can narrow it down for administration.
It's just got the relocation of, of the deer, they're causing the problem.
Okay. Councillor Crokin, if I could, can we maybe narrow the scope of that a little bit? I don't believe the City of Grand Prairie has jurisdiction to be able to relocate the deer. I think the only, as I said, I think the, the feeding wild game within the City of Grand Prairie is maybe the right direction to go, so could we narrow the scope to that?
Or putting reflective tape on them to help drivers, but feeding would be, would be good.
Okay, so if we could, so we'll have a motion to refer to Protective Services-
Yes.
A bylaw amendment to ban the feeding of wild game within city limits. Okay, thanks very much. So I think any council member can refer any issue to any agenda at any time, so I don't believe we need a motion on that. So we'll just have that as a referral item. Okay? Sure, councillor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given, and this was brought up about if somebody's feeding wild animals, a deer or a moose, it can be very dangerous. So if we don't have a bylaw, definitely I'm in favor of having this looked at.
Okay, councillor Rice?
I, I'm wondering if the referral is, the scope is a bit too narrow. Like, it seems to me that we've had, one of the other concerns was the health issues in terms of animal feces, and, and I wonder if maybe the committee should have the scope to look at meeting with fish and wildlife and say, okay, what can we do? I mean, if we don't have the authority, maybe they could, it's, it's kind of their job.
If, with council's indulgence, I, I can say that I actually have had a conversation with fish and wildlife in regards to this issue, and this recommendation is probably about the best that we can do. And fish and wildlife doesn't have the authority to just pick up animals. They either, unless they're-
Ravid?
Hazardous, yeah. So, so in terms of relocation, or in terms of the cleanup, I believe that in terms of the laws of the province of Alberta and of the City of Grand Prairie, I don't believe we have jurisdiction to, to handle it any other way than this recommendation.
So, am I hearing you that the province doesn't have jurisdiction to do it? These just wander around and law unto themselves?
Well, I wonder if our acting director of public, or Protective Services would like to speak to that a little bit, Ms. Blackburn?
Thanks, Mayor Given.
You're just gonna have to hit your microphone there.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I did have an opportunity to speak with Gary Roth regarding this issue, and he did brief me on the concern. He has spoken with, at length with Mr. Severson on more than one occasion, and he's also had some discussions with fish and wildlife. He did advise that it is part of the Wildlife Act, which the city has no jurisdiction, it is a provincial responsibility, so we'd have to have those discussions, as Mayor Given suggests.
Okay, thanks very much. So councillor Rice, I, I think in terms of scope, certainly if the committee uncovers something else at Protective Services, then we could ask administration to look at it at that point as well. Okay? Okay, so we'll consider that matter referred, dealing with our delegation business. We had no notices of motion, and that would take us to council member reports. And I saw councillor Gustafson, you had a Centre Two Thousand report?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, we had a council Centre Two Thousand tour at, at our prestige best-kept secret here in Grand Prairie, at the Centre Two Thousand. We started our meeting with some history of, since the conception of Centre Two Thousand, and we went into discussing the discussion regarding the ability to have the Heritage Discovery Centre in our building. And we also discussed, had some discussion around the beautification project, putting the flowers in for the, for the spring here, and the planters that you may want to sponsor your business, may want to sponsor some planters in the, in the city, maybe the radio stations or the paper may want to. And we also had talked extensively about the walking trail, how it should go past Centre Two Thousand instead of around Centre Two Thousand, and so that we can get to the new hospital better and walk our trails better with the connection we're having to the north, to the south. And we had a brief discussion about the Yanceworth Forest that is actually planted, right in front of Centre Two Thousand, along the creek there, how we will be removing the metal stakes, holding the trees up, and decrease the grass growth between the trees to improve the growth of the trees. And we also discussed the need to repair the staircase wells and the handrails on the, on the patio at the Centre Two Thousand.
Yeah.
I thank council for coming and touring the center, and hope to see you there again. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Gustafson. Councillor McLean, I believe you had downtown beers at?
Thank you, Mayor Given. There's a company in our city celebrating fifty years, and it's Wapiti gravel suppliers. Help us celebrate fifty years by joining us for a bust-out breakfast to kick off stomped week. Win May twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven. We're Duke's champs parking lot. From eight-thirty to eleven-thirty a.m., the cost, free, free, free. And local entertainment will be there as well. That's everything.
Okay, thanks very much, councillor McLean. Councillor O'Toole, I believe you had library board?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I attended the library board meeting, a number of items were brought up to the table. On June fourth, the geek, it's the members of the community will be invited to demonstrate what is, what is their geek. So we may have somebody that's a chairman of the board, or somebody that's a high-profile person with a company or business in, located in town or the area, and they will spend fifteen, twenty minutes, half an hour, talking about their hobby, which is kind of a geeky hobby, and that's going to be down at the library. Like, the comment on what councillor Lauren Radburn had suggested about the Peace Library System, we've had over two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand people use the library in the past year, and that's one of the reasons why the Peace Library System is a bit of a, little bit of a strain right now, and we're working on that. Lot of items that are being talked about, there's different sources of media, and, and not only just books at the library, we have tapes and other projects. Some of the programs include preschool, school-aged and adult, and seniors, and just wanted to let everybody know about that.
Thanks very much, councillor O'Toole. Councillor Radburn, Peace Library System?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Have a dozen things to highlight. May fourteenth, this past Saturday, was our annual general meeting and regular board meeting. The new chair is Veronica Bliska, MD of Peace River, and the vice-chair is Ray Skupnick, MD of Fearview. Audit financial statement for two thousand and ten showed a seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-four-dollar surplus on a two-point-five-million-dollar budget. Interlibrary loan delivery efficiencies, that's part of the work that we did in terms of trying to be more efficient, in terms of those expenditures. Provincial Library System facility audit is forthcoming, so I think they're looking at all of the, the library systems across Alberta in terms of their facilities, and I think that's good, and hopefully that will result in some monies from the provincial government to help with addressing any deficiencies or concerns with those facilities. We will be also, Peace Library System probably getting council involved too, but we're asking the MPs to reintroduce Bill C five-oh-nine, or its equivalent, which would continue the library book rate, reduce postage rate to mail books from library to library, and allow libraries to get the same rate for mail non-print materials. And so apparently that was almost passed, it ended up in the Senate, and so I don't know the parliamentary procedure, but apparently it can die in the Senate as well because of the election, so I think they have to have at it again. And finally, Peace Library System will be celebrating its twenty-fifth anniversary, and there'll be a celebration on September twenty-first as a prelude to the annual Rural Libraries Conference. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, councillor Radburn. And councillor O'Toole, I believe you had the Dr. Philip J. Curry Dinosaur Museum update.
Yes.
Gotcha.
I want to. Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just, everybody know that the name change from the River of Death and Discovery is to the Philip J. Curry, and this week, later on this week, we'll be announcing the new signage, and that sort of thing that goes along with the new, new name change. That was one of the items that was brought up. Also, I can't tell you who's going to be here on July twenty-third, but I know the list is getting longer with celebrities, and it is a complete sellout as we speak right now.
Well, great news. Thanks very much, councillor O'Toole. Were there any other council member reports from agencies, boards, and commissions? Anybody that I missed? Okay, thank you very much. And so we'll move on to council member roundtable, and we'll start with councillor Crokin.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I just like us all to remember and keep all of the citizens in Slave Lake in your prayers for their terrible tragedy that happened just in the last few days. On May the fourth, I attended the Centre Two Thousand Edson Trail ribbon-cutting ceremony, and had, had an opportunity to taste what my granddad ate many times over the Edson Trail, rabbit and Saskatoon jelly and bannock. It was very good. Later that evening, I attended the Reels Short Film Festival. It was great, it was really a piece of cake. May sixth, I attended the presentation of the EMS Awards. Congrats again to, one of the recipients is here, very good. Then later that night, there was somebody turned forty, and I don't know who it was, but his initials are DW. May seventh, on behalf of you, Mayor Given, I flipped burgers at, and respectfully, they were all flipped on buns, at M&amp;M for a fundraiser for the Crohn's and Klittis. Thanks to all the volunteers, it was a garage sale and fundraiser burgers. On May ninth, the Centre Two Thousand lunch and building tour, Alec, that was very good. On the tenth and to the twelfth, I was at Fort McMurray for the President Summit on Energy. Included tours of Syncrude, it was an eye-opener for a massive proportion of, of an energy project that we do have in our province. The Honorable Ministers Rob Renner of Environment and the Honorable Minister of Energy, Ron Leiber, were both there and spoke of the importance of coming up with a national energy strategy. May thirteenth, I attended the, the Regional Heritage Fair at Maude Clifford School, that was really nice to see those young folks, and the best one that I got was Roberto La Longo display, seeing that he, you know, pushed him on and to win that first game, that was great. Those kids did a good job. On May fourteenth, I attended on behalf of you, Mayor, of you, Mayor Given, the boys' choir at the Alliance Church. There was over a hundred young men, and they had a special rendition of something that's called Power Tools, I didn't know what they were going to do there, but I didn't really know you could get B minor out of a bunch of drills and saws and sand, papers, oh, it was, it was a real, a real production. And there was a special return by an Acapola group called Epsilon, and really the boys look up to them. And today, earlier, I attended the Public Works proclamation and at the Service Center signing, and that's all, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, councillor Crokin. Councillor Gustafson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I attended the Dream Home Gala ribbon-cutting ceremony in West Lake Village, just outside the city limits, in the county, a very beautiful, nice dream home this year, and I encourage you all to get your tickets for your donation, because I already have the winning ticket. And I attended the Alberta Emergency Service Medals Awards at the P. Deeger Fire, Fire Department. Congratulations to the recipients, and a big thank you to, to them for doing such a great job and looking after us. Centre Two Thousand meeting, a hundredth anniversary homecoming meeting we had there. I attended the Chamber of Commerce Morning Mixer, sponsored by the Royal Bank of Canada here in, at the Royal Bank, thank you to them for a well-put-on event, and I'd just like to say that at this point that I'm, you know, very proud to be a Canadian and a, and a Albertan, as we, we come together and help our friends in the time of need, it's so, so heartfelt, warming to, to know that all the people are helping everybody with their homes that burnt down, and it's hard to fathom not having a house and everything that you own, so our hearts and prayers are with them, Slave Lake residents, and I wish them all the best. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Gustafson. Councillor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. After council last time, May second, I whipped over and congratulated Chris Workington on his election celebration. May third, Economic Development Advisory Committee, we reviewed the actions regarding the committee priorities, we reviewed the citizen satisfaction survey results, and we reviewed the council strategic plan, so, and we set a meeting to talk about looking at revisions to our present economic development strategy. May fourth, attended the opening of the Reels Shorts Film Festival, a real jewel. This is something I've mentioned to numbers, a number of people that probably I would not have gone to without getting an invitation as a councillor. And I've gone for two, couple of years now, and I really enjoy it, and so I really want to congratulate Terry Sarback and her committee for a tremendous amount of work, and it's a, it's very, very enjoyable. I also attended the Grand Prairie Rotary Dream Home opening and ribbon-cutting. I attended the Alberta Emergency Service Medals. Those who receiving medals were Rick Saban, Tamara Klimp, and, and Jeanne Blackburn was who Alderman Crokin was referring to as somebody in the house had won. May ninth, Centre Two Thousand information session and tour, and an information session with the Pomori Group. May tenth, Inbridge Project Update, Chamber Lunch and Learn, and then I popped into both the Transportation Master Plan Open House that day, and the Parks Master Plan Open House. Thank you to those citizens, residents who took the time to come down to Muskee Park and provide input and comments. May twelfth, I attended the Partners in Crime Prevention Day at the Prairie Mall. This is a day where the number boosts that are contributing to crime prevention and supporting youth and adults in our, in our fair city. And thirteenth, the Regional Heritage Fair at Maude Clifford School, a great venue, as Mayor Given pointed out, it was great to have that fair in our city's gym. And today, I attended the J.C. Mackey Park Groundbreaking, and then the Public Works Week proclamation. Thank you.
Thanks very much, councillor Radburn. Councillor O'Toole?
Thank you, Mayor Given. On May second, after our council meeting, once again, I did attend MP Chris Workington's election night, spent a few minutes with her. And on May third, I went to the EMS Annual General Meeting in Centre Two Thousand, and I watched them award some of the local areas with some money. On the fourth, I also attended the Reels Shorts Film Festival at the Second Street Theater. I've got to emphasize that I also, with my wife, had a great time, and Terry Sarback and staff, great job. I know it was a lot of work, and it's a little jewel that everybody should mark on their calendars for next year. I, on May fifth, I went to the River of Death and Discovery Philip J. Curry Museum, and we already talked about that earlier. I also attended the Dream Home later that night and the ribbon-cutting, purchased my ticket, and I did not go in because I did not have my wife, and it would be wrong if I did that, so just protecting my own interests there. We're planning that for this weekend, by the way. I attended City Hall and Area Cleanup, or the City Scrub, with many people from City Hall and some councillors as well. My granddaughter Haley joined me, and we spent forty-five minutes cleaning up around the City Hall. We got everything from cigarette butts to car parts, so my granddaughter was quite disgusted in a lot of things that we picked up. May six, we went to the, with my granddaughter, to the presentation of the Alberta Emergency Services Medals, Chaplain Richard Sabin, dispatcher Tamara Klimp, and Deputy Chief Janice, Janine Blackmore, Blackburn. One thing I did notice that when they were accepting their awards, they stopped and thanked both families, the family that they work with and their families that are part of their lives, and that really touched my heart as well. On May six, we did attend a birthday event for councillor Dan Wong, it was a great time. On May seventh, I brought greetings to the fiftieth anniversary of Giant Tiger in Canada, and five years in Grand Prairie in this location, I handed out cake. It just disappeared. I don't know where these people were coming from, but there was a lot of it gone in a very short time. On May ninth, Centre Two Thousand, I attended a lunch and building tour, very informative, learnt a little bit about the history of the building and ideas for future growth were discussed. May tenth, I attended- Uh, May tenth, I attended the Library Board, already mentioned that. And, uh, on the eleventh, I drove up with a friend of mine up to the Chinchaga area, uh, for him to do some business. And when I was in the Manning area, I noticed a lot of local businesses from Grand Prairie up there doing business. So, uh, we are a heart, uh, of the, the hub of this area. And it was just neat to see the local businesses up there doing their work, the salesmen making their calls. So it was, uh, kind of an eye-opener for myself. On May twelfth, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, Morning Mixer at the Royal Bank, I attended. The thirteenth, I attended the Maud Clifford School Heritage Fair. And I thought that was, uh, pretty interesting, uh, topics that people had, or the young people had chose. I asked them, uh, spent some time asking the, the young people why they did it, uh, why they chose that topic. And it was some really interesting responses. And, uh, kudos to the people that supported the program, the teachers, the parents that sort of probably helped a lot, and the kids for, uh, for having, uh, great ideas. And on, uh, today, we went down and, uh, Mayor Gibbon, uh, had groundbreaking, uh, at, uh, the Mackey Field, or Mackey Park, uh, for four soccer fields that will be built. And probably in good shape here in about two years. And also, I attended the city's centre, uh, building this afternoon for the Public Works Week kickoff. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Councilor O'Toole. Councilor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Gibbon. On May third, I attended the EMS Annual General Meeting at Centre Two Thousand with my wife. And she's the director of it as well. And the new chair is Dwight Logan, our past mayor, our former mayor, and, uh, and I think they're in really good hands. On May fourth, I also attended with my wife the Real Short Film Festival, which was, I believe, put on and orchestrated with city manager Greg's wife, Terry. And the job was tremendous, unbelievable. May fifth, uh, one of the extra meetings, I threw this in, we had a meeting at Forble Housing, you seen some stuff tonight. And it's very positive for the future of Grand Prairie and, um, lower income and, and homeless. As well, May sixth, I attended the presentation of Alberta Emergency Services Awards. There's three individuals that received it, and, uh, and it was, uh, very well done. And, uh, hopefully it continues on further as we are looking at service awards coming up down the road for city staff. On May ninth, I also attended the Centre Two Thousand Lunch and Tour Meeting with the Chamber of Commerce. And, uh, our sundial, I do believe, is called, is a tourist attraction. And when I helped build part of that building with Caldon, it's, I never thought it'd be a big deal, but it, it actually is. You could drive by and people are taking pictures there. And on May thirteenth, I was at, uh, Regional Heritage Fair Opening Ceremonies at the Maud Clifford School. And there was quite a bit of stuff the children had on displays, and there was quite a few who caught my eye, War of eighteen twelve, go on and on. But it was GPS for St. Pierre, and I said, how can I get onto the internet and see some of his previous, uh, fights? And they said, GPS Fight Club. So anyways, they gave me some information to the youngsters, so that's everything.
Thanks very much, Councilor McLean. Councilor Wong?
Yes, thank you very, very much, Mayor Gibbon. Uh, almost everything that, uh, I attended has already been mentioned. I'll just go over them really quickly. I attended Chris Workington's post-election event, the Real Shorts Film Festival, the Dream Home Lottery Launch, the, uh, Alberta Emergency Services Medals Presentation, Centre Two Thousand Board and, uh, Building Tour, the information session with the Palmeroy Group, uh, and the proclamation of Public Works Week at the City Service Centre this morning. Um, I just also wanted to say that, uh, I don't want to substantiate any rumors that I had turned forty any time recently. But I do want to thank those council members that, that did show up for a birthday party of mine. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Councilor Wong. Councilor Rice? You bet.
Okay. Um, and I just want to say that in, in my quest to ensure total honesty around this table, I was at the party, I know he turned forty. Um, I, uh, too, I attended the Centre Two Thousand, uh, meeting and tour. Uh, there's, uh, been, um, a couple of people have mentioned, uh, the tragedy in our nor- northern neighbor of Slave Lake. And, um, I don't, the rumors are flying now. It's in between thirty to seventy percent of the town gone. Nobody knows for sure. Uh, they're saying, you know, the hospital went, no, the hospital didn't go. The RCMP station went, no, the RCMP didn't. Nobody knows. They've evacuated the entire community there. Their, uh, they, their initiative was to get everyone, um, out of that community, and, and they have this farthno, um, with, with absolutely no injuries. I just want to take this opportunity to say, um, how very, very proud I am of our emergency services personnel. They understand the province called and put our, uh, fire service on standby, and they were ready to go. And in fact, um, entered that community around six AM this morning, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and, uh, I'm just very proud of, of those dedicated men and women. And, and congratulate Deputy Chief, uh, Blackburn, I almost called her her maiden name, imagine that. Um, that goes back a ways. Um, and, uh, on, on, you know, being part of, of that kind of an extremely professional, dedicated team.
Thanks very much, Councilor Rice. Councilor Monroe?
Thanks very much, Mayor Gibbon. Uh, I, I, uh, attended the Dream Home Garage Gala as well. Uh, also on May sixth, I, uh, attended the Centre for Research and Innovation Wine and Cheese Gala that they had at Centre Two Thousand. Uh, and it was just recognizing some of the accomplishments of, uh, of their various clients. And it was good, uh, we had probably about thirty-five people there, uh, uh, great turnout. Uh, uh, I attended the Real Shorts Psycho Shorts. And, uh, that was the midnight showing on the Friday night of, uh, of the film festival, where I believe that the legend of Beaver Dam is, uh, the one best of the fest. And, uh, uh, we watched it, uh, that evening. It was a, it was a great time. Uh, just of note with that as well, too, uh, the, the, uh, Real Shorts Film Festival is, uh, one of our recipients through the, uh, Arts Development Committee. Uh, we, uh, um, gave them some festival grants, uh, money, uh, earlier on this year. Uh, did the Centre Two Thousand Lunch and Tour on May ninth, as well as met with the Palmeroy Group. Uh, May tenth, uh, went to the Inbridge Northern Gateway Pipeline Project, uh, Learning Session. And that's the pipeline, of course, that, uh, goes from Edmonton to Kitimat and, uh, should, uh, bring some economic benefit to the area. May eleventh, attended, uh, once again, a Centre for Research and Innovation Steering Team Meeting, uh, where we, uh, discussed, uh, uh, various issues, uh, in regards to funding and grants, and, uh, are hopeful that, uh, we'll be, uh, successful with, with some of our grant applications through there. Uh, May twelfth, the Heritage Fair, uh, great, uh, great event put on at, uh, at the school. Uh, May sixth, or today, I guess, uh, groundbreaking, uh, with, uh, uh, Mayor Gibbon, Councilor O'Toole, Councilor Radburn at, uh, J.C. Mackey Park Soccer Fields. And, uh, finally, I just wanted to mention that, uh, last night I attended the, uh, Nighthawk Alpine Ski Club's AGM and Awards. And what I wanted to mention about it was that, uh, Kevin Krennic, uh, did, uh, a tribute to, uh, Steve Kay, a for- former city employee. And, uh, they've, it wa- it was, it was a really moving presentation, nice, uh, video clip, uh, about ten-minute video clip. Uh, the family attended as well. Um, as a result, uh, uh, the, uh, club has, uh, uh, gone ahead and, uh, named an award, a annual award after, uh, Steve, uh, Coach of the Year Award, as Steve was a coach out there for, for many years, and, uh, that'll be ongoing recognition. And that was it. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Monroe. So a number of the, uh, events that I attended have been mentioned. Um, so I'll go through them relatively quickly if they have been mentioned. On Wednesday the fourth, I attended, uh, at Crystal Centre for the funeral of, uh, city employee Alex Thompson. Uh, Alex was an employee, uh, at the city in various roles, and, uh, certainly at the Crystal Centre. He's survived by his brother Bob, who is also a city employee. And so, uh, our heartfelt condolences go to Bob and the rest of the Thompson family and, uh, the city of Grand Prairie family, who've experienced a number of losses over the last while. Um, later that day, I was at Centre Two Thousand for the, uh, ribbon cutting of, of the Edson Trail Exhibition. It's a hundred years since the Edson Trail opened up and brought settlers to this area. And there's a list of, uh, different events that will be happening over the course of the summer to mark that milestone. Later that evening, I also attended the grand opening of the Real Shorts Film Festival. On the fifth, I attended at Maud Clifford for Arbor Day and helped students plant a tree. Uh, I think they're just about as excited to see Birdie the Beaver as they were to see me. Uh, but that's fair. He's soft and lovable and huggy, and I'm, I'm okay too. Um, later that evening, I went to the Dream Home Lottery Kickoff. Uh, good to see that that fundraiser is going strong. Uh, the Rotary Club of Grand Prairie has picked that up, and I certainly believe it's in good hands with them. Uh, on the sixth, I was also at the Rural Alberta Development Fund Wine and Cheese for the CRI. Uh, I think it was also, uh, to really note that the CRI is a success of the Rural Alberta Development Fund. It was originally started up with money from that fund and has really gone on to have a significant impact for inventors and entrepreneurs in the region. Um, on Saturday morning, I participated in the Rotary Greenathon, uh, with a team of grade six, five and six students from Swan Haven School. And we did a stretch of eighty-fourth Avenue from a hundredth all the way down to Resources Road. So, uh, if you went by and noticed that it looked a little bit cleaner, a little bit greener, you can thank the students from Swan Haven. Um, later that day, I dusted myself off and headed over to GPRC for their convocation. Uh, it was noted that this is actually a record year for them. It was their highest number of graduating students ever. They had two hundred and twenty students graduating from various programs. Uh, I was really impressed to see the number of students who are receiving their degrees in various disciplines, um, from different, uh, universities. Uh, there were representatives there from U of A, U of C, uh, Lethbridge, uh, and UNBC, uh, who are all there to help award degrees that students had achieved, uh, from their respective universities while they were here on campus in Grand Prairie. So I think that's fantastic news. On the ninth, I was also at the Centre Two Thousand, uh, Building Tour and meeting with the Centre Two Thousand Board. On the tenth, I was here at City Hall for a regular workday. Uh, during the day, though, I also participated in the, uh, Canadian Paraplegic Association Cheerleader Event that was mentioned earlier. And I have to say thank you very much to the, uh, association for giving me that opportunity, as well as to the, uh, Disabled Transportation Society, who were, why, transportation for the day. My day started off at nine AM with, uh, the DTS bus picking me up in the wheelchair and came to City Hall and experienced my entire workday, uh, in the chair. It's a perspective that not everybody gets to share, um, via their own choice. And I certainly feel it was an honor and a privilege to be able to do that. And, uh, we're already conspiring for next year about how we can get more people involved in that, because I believe it's very valuable for the community, uh, to have that opportunity. Uh, the twelfth, I was at Q E Two Hospital to celebrate, uh, the kickoff for Nursing Wink. Uh, it was my pleasure to attend with nurses. Uh, I was actually in a, in scrubs and a lab coat. I have to say I look pretty official. Um, I certainly enjoyed the opportunity to, uh, explore the ICU, the, uh, NICU, and the emergency departments. Uh, particularly in the emergency department, it was my first opportunity to be in there since they've done the renovations, and they've got sort of their temporary location while their main location is being renovated. And I have to say that I think it works just as well, if not better, than what I remember as the, the older, uh, emergency location. So fantastic to see that our residents are being well-cared-for by all of the nurses. Of course, that's a major part of their profession, but specifically, it's great to see that those emergency renovations are working quite well. On the thirteenth, I attended, uh, the Regional Heritage Fair and brought greetings on behalf of council. Uh, of note, there were actually students there from across the Peace Country. Uh, I believe there are some that were bussed in from Peace River. And it was great that the city of Grand Prairie could host them here, and, uh, as Councilor Radburn said, in a gymnasium that was actually paid for by city dollars. So I think that was, uh, really great to see. On, uh, that evening, I attended, uh, again at GPRC for the Northwest Region Persons with Developmental Disabilities Spring Celebrations and Awards. Uh, again, this was a regional event with people from, uh, all over the Peace Country. Philair, uh, was one of the ones that stuck out, but all over the Peace Country had come to Grand Prairie, uh, to celebrate, uh, their achievements. Um, particularly of note were the employers, uh, who ensure that, uh, these members of our communities have valuable, uh, work opportunities and, uh, opportunities to contribute to the community. And I have to say that when I looked around the room, I saw pe- I saw families, I saw workers, I saw community volunteers, and I saw valued members of our communities, um, and I didn't see anybody with a disability. So, uh, it's a great opportunity. If any council member gets an opportunity to go to that event, I certainly would encourage it. On Saturday the fourteenth, I attended at the EFC Mixed Martial Arts Event at Crystal Centre. And again, congratulations, Councilor Wong and the commission for, uh, making that event go finally after all this time. And it looked like it was a great event for Crystal Centre. One of the concerns of the community has been the, uh, lack of events, perceived lack of events at the Crystal Centre. And I think this is one of those ones where local businesses would certainly say that they saw an uptick in business, uh, from hosting that event. And so I think that's good news. And then today, I was at, uh, J.C. Mackey Park, where we turned the sod on the soccer fields, as was mentioned. I just wanted to note that the, uh, design of the fields will actually be such that there'll be up to five youth soccer fields. Uh, and two of those can be combined to do an adult soccer field. So, uh, it'll take a couple of years for the grass to grow in and for them to be ready for play, but certainly something that's desperately needed in that northwest quadrant of the city. And then finally, I was at, um, the City Service Centre to, for the kickoff and proclamation declaring it Public Works Week in the city of Grand Prairie. And, uh, I certainly appreciated the opportunity to do that with, uh, our city staff. We recognize that they have a difficult job to do in the Public Works Department, uh, but they do it because they care about their community, and they, uh, do it with utmost professionalism. And just to go backwards, because I think I missed it, on Sunday morning, I was at the EMS Station to proclaim EMS Week. Um, they had an open house, and there are a number of EMS Week events going on throughout the city. And, um, interesting, the overlapping weeks, we have EMS Week events going on. We also have Public Works Week events going on. And one of the ones that's of particular interest, uh, in Public Works Week is the opportunity for children, schoolchildren, to actually experience the job that public works professionals do day-to-day. In the past, they'd brought them down to the City Service Centre and encouraged people to, uh, see what it looks like there. This year, with the help of the, uh, Downtown Association Downtown Business Owners, they're going to close a section of, uh, of a hundredth. And they will actually be doing road repairs, curbing, and sidewalk repairs right there where the students can see it firsthand and experience what it's actually like going on the street. So I think that's fantastic news. And with that, uh, we'll call our meeting adjourned.